Call to order the March 9th meeting of the Cary Town Council. And at this time, I'll recognize Councilmember Johnson for our ceremonial opening.
Our Public Art Advisory Board member Glenn Guerra. He passed away in early February. And on behalf of the Public Art Advisory Board, for which I'm the council liaison, Town Council and staff, I wanted to express how grateful we all are for his dedication to the community and to have gotten to know him. He's a really nice man. I ask you all to keep his family in your hearts during this difficult time. And his journey was documented on his GoFundMe page. I wanted to share a few things. I learned from his wife on that page after his passing that multiple myeloma is a pretty terrible cancer that can easily be underestimated and misdiagnosed. And better awareness could allow it to be caught earlier and give people a much better chance at some extra time with their loved ones and perhaps even beating that cancer. So I urge anyone that's listening to take a few minutes, just read about the symptoms of multiple myeloma. I know it's not fun to read, but it's something that could save somebody's life. I also wanted to share that one of the other things I learned from Glenn's wife's writings on the page is that you are your own best health advocate. And so that's just something I think everybody should keep in mind. You know yourself best. The GoFundMe page is still active. It's there to help cover the medical bills that weren't covered by insurance. We all know how those can add up. Any remaining funds beyond those needed for those bills will be shared with the Multiple Myeloma Research Foundation. Anybody who's interested in donating, I welcome you just to send me an email, carissa.johnson@caricanc.gov. And I'll be happy to share the link directly with you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Now, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. The end of this law, with liberty and justice for all.
First order of business tonight is to adopt an agenda. Do I have a motion to adopt the...
So moved.
There's a motion.
Second.
And a second discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. We're now at the recognitions, reports, and presentations of our meeting. And I would like to invite the members of the Citizens Assisting Police, or CAP, representatives to meet me at the podium for special presentations. Hi.
Distinguished council members, good evening. My name is Cheryl Marums, and I am the current Cary CAP team president. I am joined here at the podium by our current Volunteer of the Year, Margie Harper. And we are also joined in the gallery sitting behind us, additional CAP team members have joined us tonight.
Could you guys stand so everybody could see? Yeah, thank you for being here.
The Cary CAP team motto is actually serving those who serve. And in 2022, serve we did. We actually, as a team, accumulated more than 4,000 volunteer hours in service to both the Cary Police Department and the Town of Cary and its citizens. Some of the activities we serve and volunteer for are things like spring days, lazy days. We do weekly child seat installations and inspections. We do seatbelt surveys throughout the town and many other activities. What we're doing here tonight is we took those 4,000-plus hours and we paired it along with the starting hourly salary of an entry-level police officer. We did a little bit of math, and we came up with a number. And that number is $116,230.32. We've placed that amount on this big, beautiful check that we would be honored to present to you today as a symbol to both our service and our savings that we bring to both the Cary Police Department and the Town of Cary. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. The service you give to not only our police department, but our citizens is invaluable. And I've had the blessing to meet several of you at other events. And you provide such a great service, and we're so blessed to have you. And thank you for all you do, and keep doing what you're doing.
We will. We are ready.
And I see our police chief over there smiling. He's so happy that you got...
We like that, too.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I think our staff is sitting out there going, "What happens to the citizens assisting accountants and the..."
Assistant Hertz and Rec.
Our next item on recognitions and presentations and reports is the manager's update, Mr. Stiegel.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have some very good news that's been years, actually more like a decade in the making. On Tuesday, we closed on the Northwoods-Jordan/First Baptist Church/Town of Cary redevelopment deal. For those not familiar with the project, we're talking about the southeast corner of Harrison Avenue and West Chatham Street in downtown Cary, which will become a mixed-use development with offices, retail, and multifamily housing. The town's role in supporting the project is public infrastructure, including stormwater facilities, sidewalks, and a public parking deck. There's a very long list of people to thank for this week's milestone. Of course, you have George and Jordan and members of the First Baptist Church. Many, many council members have played a very significant role in this, even in the negotiations with the mayor. And Don, I know you spent a lot of time on this project. And so just want to thank everybody, not only for their leadership, the many, many staff members that have worked on it, and for everyone's patience and the community's patience. And now looking forward to a very exciting project moving forward.
Wow, ever since I can remember, I'm like, this is a project that's been ongoing forever. So to see it come to fruition, wow, it's pretty amazing.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Well, we now move to the Public Speaks Out portion of our meeting. We've included instructions for speaking at Public Speaks Out on the printed agenda and online. There were three opportunities to participate in Public Speaks Out through written comments, calling in, or attending here in person tonight. And if you are here in person and would like to speak at Public Speaks Out, I would ask that you take a seat in the rows to my right that are highlighted. Public Speaks Out speakers have three minutes each for their comments, and speakers may speak on any topic as long as it's not a public hearing. And that's to your benefit because you get more time to speak at a public hearing. The three-minute time limit will be enforced not to be rude, but to be fair to all of our speakers. And we even have a timer on the podium to help you watch your time. It'll start off with a green light, and when there's 30 seconds remaining, it'll turn to a yellow light. And when your time is expired, it will flash red. Again, that's the point, and I'll interrupt you, not trying to be rude, but trying to be fair to all of our speakers. I'd like everyone in the audience to respect that this is a business meeting. Please do not applaud, make remarks from your seats, or anything else that may distract from the meeting. So now is the time for Public Speaks Out. And I'll start off by calling on our clerk for any written comments or any call-in speakers.
We had two written comments, one from David Gardner about the recent Cary Arts Plan. He's asking for dollar amounts to be added to each of the pictures within that plan. And then our second written comment was from RTP Voice. And they wrote in, in light of the various railroad incidents throughout the country, they raised concerns about the conditions of the railroad between Apex and Durham that runs behind the Davis Drive School and along Highway 55. And they suggested, within their comments, of their transportation uses for that rail. No call-in speakers and no registered speakers.
Okay. If you're here tonight and would like to speak at Public Speaks Out, now's your time. And I would invite the first speaker forward. Anyone here for Public Speaks Out? Seeing no one, we'll close Public Speaks Out and we'll move to the fourth item on the agenda, which is the Consent Agenda. For the benefit of people watching our meeting on TV, I'm going to take a moment to review the Consent Agenda items. Please keep in mind that one vote approves all of these items. On the Consent Agenda, we have minutes, adjustment to adopted meeting schedule, T-Mobile South LLC License Agreement, resolution for street renaming of Grace Bay Place to Creighton Oak Drive, bid award for the Maynard Road/Water Main and Sidewalk Project, High House to Old Apex. Would council members like any of these items pulled for discussion? If not, I would entertain a motion to approve the Consent Agenda.
So moved.
There's a motion.
Second.
And a second discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. And that takes us to public hearings, which is item five on the agenda. Same rules apply for public hearings that apply for Public Speaks Out with one exception. You now have five minutes each for your comments. Our first public hearing is 22A-19 Millstone Annexation, and senior planner Erin Puckett will introduce the hearing. Council may take action. Ms. Puckett.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm meeting the council. The owners of an unaddressed 32.92-acre parcel located at the Mills Road and Green Level Church Road intersection, and an adjoining 6.01-acre parcel located at 7824 Emory Gale Lane, have petitioned for annexation so that the parcels may be connected to Cary utilities to facilitate construction of up to 70 detached dwellings. The total annexation area is 42.14 acres, which includes 3.21 acres of intervening right-of-way, which is within the adjacent Mills Road and Green Level Church Road. The area is contiguous to Cary's corporate limits and is within the ETJ. The property is zoned residential 12, conditional use, based on rezoning cases 21REZ-07 and 21REZ-19. The associated development plan, 22DP-7419, is currently under review and based on the provisions of the LDO, can be approved administratively when staff determines the plan meets applicable LDO requirements. In accordance with the ordinance, the property must be annexed before the development plan can be approved. Following tonight's public hearing, council may take action. This concludes my presentation, and following the public hearing, I'm happy to answer your questions.
Thank you, Ms. Puckett. Now's the time for the public hearing, and I'll call on our clerk for any written comments or call-in speakers.
No written comments or registered speakers.
Now it's time for a public hearing. If you're here attending this evening and would like to speak on this item, I would invite you forward. Anyone to speak at this public hearing? Seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing. Open it up to council members for any questions or comments.
Make a motion to approve annexation 22A-19?
There's a motion.
I'll second that.
And a second discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Ms. Puckett.
Thank you.
We now move to discussion items. Our only discussion is the consideration of street renaming process for Green Level West Road. And once again, Ms. Puckett will present this item, and council may take action. Ms. Puckett.
Thank you. Before you this evening is a discussion item to consider beginning the process to rename portions of Green Level West Road to High House Road. During a recent council work session regarding rezonings proposed for the Green Level Destination Center, which includes the proposed Duke Health Medical Campus, the transition of High House Road to Green Level West Road was discussed. At that time, there was some council interest in having staff research a potential road renaming for portions of Green Level West Road. Staff has evaluated the corridor in more detail, and we're here tonight to present the results of that research to you and to confirm council's direction on next steps. Cary has a standard procedure for street renaming, which is enabled by North Carolina general statutes. Should council choose to direct staff to proceed with a renaming, planning staff would first coordinate with our internal stakeholders. We would also need to coordinate with Wake County, as well as potentially staff in Apex and Chatham County, depending on the extent of the corridor proposed for renaming. In the case of this particular corridor, coordination with the NCDOT Turnpike Authority would also be required as a number of interchange signs are impacted. Once coordination occurred with these stakeholders, staff would notify impacted property owners, and we would conduct a public information meeting. A public hearing would then be scheduled in front of council, which would also include notification. And if approved following the public hearing, staff would update internal maps and databases, notify USPS, as well as any impacted internal and external departments and agencies, such as utility providers, schools, the Board of Elections, and others. High House Road is a thoroughfare running east and west through Cary, beginning near downtown on its eastern end, and currently ending at NC-55 Highway, as shown in green on this map. West of NC-55, the road name changes to Green Level West Road, which is shown in pink, which changes again to Green Level Road near the Chatham County border, which is shown in brown. The entire corridor from Chatham Street to Luter Shop Road is just over 10 miles long, with the Green Level West and Green Level segments accounting for approximately 5.5 miles of the corridor. Cary periodically changes street names for reasons related to improve navigation and consistency along major roads. This corridor could be an opportunity to create better consistency along a major east-west This corridor is also of importance as the Imagine Cary Community Plan envisions the Green Level Destination Center, shown on this map in brown, to be developed as a mixed-use, employment-focused center at a major interchange. This destination center encompasses land on both sides of Green Level West Road. As discussed at your work session, there are three active rezoning proposals in this destination center, including the proposed Duke Health Development, which proposes to construct a hospital. The first Duke Health Medical Office building was recently completed along Green Level West Road. Staff identified four distinct segments of Green Level West Road, as shown here. Segment A extends west from NC-55 to NC-540 and includes 12 existing addresses. B continues to Green Level Church Road, encompasses the destination center, and includes 22 addresses. C continues to the Chatham County line and includes 53 addresses. And D is fully within Chatham County, with Luter Shop Road as the western terminus and includes 35 addresses. As seen on this map and detailed more specifically in your staff report, segments A and B include properties in Cary and Wake County. Segment C includes properties in Apex in addition to Cary and Wake County. The last segment, D, is fully in Chatham County's jurisdiction. Renaming Green Level West Road and Green Level Road in the two westernmost segments would therefore require additional coordination with Apex and/or Chatham County, which would include action needed by their respective governing boards. Because segments A and B have the fewest impacted properties, which would require readdressing and would require coordination with fewer external stakeholders, staff recommends that if council does wish to proceed with a road renaming, these segments could be the most straightforward of the four to rename. Segment C and/or D could still be explored for renaming at a future date. At that time, Cary staff would coordinate with Apex and Chatham County as needed to explore the feasibility of renaming those western segments. There would also be a fiscal impact to replace street signs along the road itself, as well as on NC-540 near the Green Level West interchange. In addition to the street signs, which are shown here by segment, there are two traffic signal signs on NC-55 Highway and one on Green Level Church Road. There are six interchange signs on NC-540, which show the Green Level West Road name, as well as two etchings, one on each side of the bridge. Coordination with the NCDOT Turnpike Authority would be needed to discern the extent of the cost to change the signage. Staff is bringing this item forward tonight to receive your direction on whether to proceed with the renaming, and if so, whether you prefer staff to begin work on the recommended option of segments A and B or a different extent. If council wishes to move forward, staff will begin the road renaming process consistent with Cary's standard procedure for road renaming. Those next steps would include coordinating with both internal and external stakeholders, including holding a public information meeting and discerning the specific fiscal impact, and scheduling a public hearing, which will include sending written notice to all impacted property owners. This concludes my presentation, and I'm happy to answer your questions.
Thank you, Ms. Puckett. Questions for Ms. Puckett or comments?
Don points to me because he knows I'm passionate about this.
I've only been hearing about this for probably 10 years.
So long that they didn't have that stamped sign. I was asking to have this road renamed before the stamped sign happened, and I was disappointed when they stamped it into a bridge. I was like, seriously? I am a strong proponent of doing this, and I think we should definitely do it for segments A and B. I also think that we should go ahead and move forward and talk to our counterparts in Apex and Chatham about doing it all the way through. The road eventually terminates. I mean, there are some roads that go on forever, but this one actually terminates at Luter Shop. And I think, you know, 35 addresses is a lot, but it's not like a ton, and it's only going to get increased as development occurs out there, which it will. I mean, everybody always says, "No, I'm going to keep my land forever," which might be there forever, but then, as soon as they pass away, their children sell it. So, yeah, so I say it's just the time is now. And it's very confusing for people out west. Everything green, this, and everything green level. I mean, there's just so much redundancy in naming out there. It's very confusing for people.
I agree. From the Green Level West to Green Level... Green Level West is actually east of Green Level, which makes it even more confusing for anyone who actually knows which way they're going. And having lived out there, and you have as well, it's very difficult to tell someone, you go down High House, and then you're going to keep going straight, but the name of the road changes to Green Level West. And then you're going to keep going straight, and the name of the road that you're going west on actually removes the word west. It's just confusing. And it's confusing not just for average, everyday people, but I've seen firefighters and police and other people get lost, right? Because they don't know where they're going when it crosses from the jurisdiction from Chatham County, especially when my mother lived in Chatham County in Cary, and mutual aid had a hard time figuring out, which one is it? Do I go Green Level West? So you've been talking about this long before I ever got on council, which is 12 years ago. So I'm totally on board with it as well.
So that brings up a good question to me. If it's a safety issue, then that's a no-brainer. So with today's technology, is still confusing to fire and police?
Well, when we brought it up 10 years ago, it was.
It was. It was before GPS systems, which that's how long we've been talking.
You still have the confusion issue, though.
I think it's confusing to citizens.
Yeah. I still think there are several Strava apps and other apps that still, to this day, when I take a ride out there, get confused. They don't know what... And by the way, there's only so much room on the app. So it'll say Green Level, but it's actually Green Level West, but the West isn't on there, right? So it's just, it's confusing.
Mayor Madge, I want to more clearly, the point that Councilmember Bush is bringing up, I haven't been involved in road renaming here very much, but in my career I have. And public safety always was a big issue. Technology's made that moot, but I'm sure it was an issue 10 years ago. But I also would say that if you were to ask police and firefighters if they'd prefer it to all be one name, that's still better, right? And so...
It's just cleaner.
Yeah, well, certainly it's cleaner. So that used to be a very big issue, though.
I agree with most of the comments. I would love to hear what our citizens have to say. Obviously, this is the first step in that process, to take it to them and see what their feedback and opinions are. I would hope that we don't just advertise or notify the directly impacted people as much as also the people who live out there that kind of deal with this road and drive it all the time as well. And then if we are going to move forward with renaming, I don't know that I'd want to just do A and B, knowing we'd probably come back sometime in the future and go, "Why didn't we do C and D when we had the chance?" You know? So if we're going to do it, I would like to coordinate with everyone and try to see if we could do the whole thing.
Sounds reasonable.
And to follow up on that, so let's say A and B is easy, and that can be done in this amount of time. However, coordinating with Apex and Chatham County takes this amount of time. Do we want to wait and get the answer to all of that before we do anything?
Yeah. I think that's fine. We have the process rolling now. So I think if it takes us an extra six months or eight months, let's do it and do it right.
I mean, it sounds like we waited for this long. You know, you might as well wait a little while at once and do it right, and then be done with it.
One thing I would add is they may say, "Well, you guys change it first, and once we see you change it, then talk to us." They legitimately may say that.
Well, does Apex... What does Apex have to do as far as name changing? I mean, like, when you say, if they say, "See us do it first," then Apex would then say, "We see it now, we're okay with..." say, "We see it now, we're okay with signing off on it?"
Well, part of it is knowing that typically citizens aren't thrilled with this.
Yeah.
And so they may want to watch and see how difficult it is for us before they, you know, jump in the pool.
Or Apex could just say, "Cary, it's not us, Cary's taking, you know, it's Cary, and we'll just take heed for it."
They could.
Well, they would have to vote separately, so, and Erin said this in her presentation, but just to be clear, for the segments C and D, because part of that, the streets are within Apex's jurisdiction, Apex's council would have to vote to approve it.
Okay.
And then in Chatham County, that's solely Chatham County at this point. So Cary could request Chatham County to change the name, but it would be solely Chatham County's discretion to change that part.
Okay.
I think this will not go as easy as we think. I think the emotion of changing a name and that many, you know, this is like Star Trek, you know, Spock and the other guy, forget his name, Kirk, yeah, Captain Kirk. You know, the one's logical, and the other is emotional. So, you know, we're counting a lot on the logic, because it does make sense to go all the way out to Luder, absolutely does. And I hope that we'll continue to be in a partnership frame of mind and really work with Chatham and Apex on keeping that moving. And if we get, but, you know, understand, once folks are notified and see that their, you know, stationery's going, you know, all of that, we've been through this on just very short segments that we were cleaning up, and they were painful. So, you know, I think it's for all the right reasons, but we're going to, and I hope that we do it all at the same time, even if there's a little bit of delay. But if we got feedback that's different, that gives, you know, our neighbors more comfort in moving forward to complete it, fine, you know, I'm open to whatever we do. But, you know, just brace yourself, I think this one's going to be fun.
So that brings another thought up, that in the process, the staff report, I would like to know, as much as we can figure out the total impact to each individual who's going to have their street renamed, yes, they got to change their mailing address, but what will be changed for them and what will not? You know, do you have to change your voter ID card, or will that be changed? Those kinds of things would be nice to know, so we can get a better picture of the impact on those citizens.
Yes, and we do have some documentation that speaks to that, and we can work with the manager's office to get that to you.
Awesome.
Hey, one thing, Mayor, just to add to that, so there is a business called Green Level Market that is located in segment C that I would want staff to reach out specifically to, because that, I mean, you're kind of naming the road that the business is named after, kind of out from under them. So I just want to put a little extra emphasis on that to make sure they're okay with that.
Thank you.
It was a, it was a community, Green Level was a community originally, and that's where it got the street name from, so maybe, maybe they're naming it for the community and not the street.
Right, but I would definitely want them to be able to.
I think it's a good idea, yeah.
I'm certain that they were not going to get much of anything from the other jurisdictions without us voting on A and B first.
Oh, okay.
Kind of like, maybe I kind of know.
Okay, okay. So we should just go ahead and, all right, we move, yeah.
So we need a motion to direct staff?
Or A and B, is that what?
Well, what I'm saying is, we could still, we could still do, proceed with the public hearings and the community meetings just on A and B for right now, get that done.
Okay.
And then once that's done, then they're not committing to it, but they won't even think about it until they get to watch.
Okay.
We'll do it.
I do want us to be sensitive of the fact, as we're doing this, that the Green Level Community, which is an African-American community, still has Green Level High School named after that community. There's still a lot of history associated with it. We're not doing away with Green Level, but I'd like us to be sensitive to that fact that we're trying to improve, you know, transportation and communication, but still, the Green Level Community still is there and much beloved, and the school's named after it.
Is there a by chance historical marker?
I think there's one at the school that they showed us when we did a tour.
There's a Green Level Historical Area sign that's located on Green Level Church Road, I believe.
Yeah, and there is one right at the school that they, when we were there, they marked. Do you know of others?
We can look into whether there are others out there.
Life was so much simpler when it was just Third Street, Fourth Street, Fifth Street.
I hate to ask it, but are there others that the staff is looking at, other areas where roads change significantly?
No, we want to see how this goes.
Staff's like, "No, we're waiting on you all."
I'm just wondering if this is the one you chose, because it was the hardest or easiest, or?
No, it's been brought up, umpteen different times.
Yeah.
Okay.
So we have a motion to direct staff?
Can we clarify this? I get the part that we're going to move forward with A and B, but that's, we're not going to do any investigative, anything for the C and D, or?
Well, I've, I mean, I've investigated.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. So your preliminary investigation says we should just stick with A and B right now? Okey-dokey.
Yep.
Jack will be sitting here 20 years from now going, "Why didn't we do C and D when we had the chance?"
Well, this step you're taking tonight, though, gets them closer to seeing it, but still see, if the council still wants to, after you get the public feedback.
Okay.
Motion from anyone?
Oh, I'll make a motion that we start the process to rename segments A and B of Green Level West, also known as High House Road.
There's a motion.
I'll second.
And a second. Discussion for those who are just watching.
Well, I think the discussion is that we're also directing in parallel with the staff to keep our neighbors informed of the process that we're going through, you know, and all of the above that we go through for this process. But I think in parallel, we've got to keep, doesn't have to be part of the motion, but we got to keep our neighbors involved in this, too.
And for the public, just to be clear, no decision is being made tonight. What we're making, a motion is to, "Staff, go look into this and set the process, and let's start the process." So there's still a chance that we say no. So that's where we are, that's what the motion is. So we have a motion and a second. That was more confusing than...
No, that's totally honest, but Don is probably thinking is that six out of seven might say no.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Ms. Puckett.
Thank you.
We look forward to your next report.
Right.
That concludes our agenda. We have no other items, no closed session, so I declare this meeting adjourned. Jennifer.